Am I on here? Now I am. Look at that. All right. Brought up before me was that something that's normally done, not necessarily at our meeting, but at meetings like ours that have happened before was they said, "Why aren't you standing up and saying the Pledge of Allegiance or otherwise as the meeting starts?" Tom Board does that. The Village Board does it, a couple of them. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna say, "Stand up," and I will lead us through the process. There's our flag right there.[51.78][52.82]"Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Great. Thank you all very much. I think that's a great way to start us, and it's something that we probably should've done a long time ago. All right, a couple of things gotta take here. We have the meeting minutes from our last meeting in front of the members of the board. What I'd like is, I hope you've had an opportunity to take a look at them, either give us a comment on any addendums or changes to them, or a comment on approving them as they are written.
I have a comment. I think Peter Adams would take exception to be listed on this, 'cause Peter Adams did not pass away. Pete Collins passed.
Oh my goodness.
Well done.
Considering I just talked to you a couple days ago. I don't know, it's still kicking.
Me too.
I'm glad you picked up on that press, and we will make sure that's corrected.
Perfect. So we've got that as a correction to the meeting, or an addendum to the meeting minutes? Any other comments or thoughts?
No, I wasn't here. I'm looking at...
All right, so we've got one comment on the meeting minutes as written. Do I have a second on that?
A second.
Seconded, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Okay. They're approved with one addendum to them as they are written. All right. Tom, do you wanna go over this or not, the page of the resolution to the board trustees on the change to our code?
Well, you don't need to go through the entire... You wanna go through the entire...
No, sir. I wanna know if you have any additional comments associated with it.
No, other than it is in effect and it is, you know, and not the one that's in your code book, this one.
Understood.
That's why I asked Joe to hand it out to everybody, because it's not yet in the code.
And all I would ask you to do is to put a line through the pages that are in there that contain this, and put this in your code book, and you'll be just fine until we get a new copy or a new book. Okay. All right, we have two items on our agenda tonight, two scheduled matters. We did a review of the October 20th meeting minutes. The first item is Costage Engineering on behalf of Donovan Flex Business Park, under contract for three parcels down on Donovan. What I'm gonna ask them to do is please give us an idea of what it is you're trying to do, what you're looking for as you come forward, and we will go there. Go ahead again.
Sorry, sidebar, everybody.
Okay. Go for it. Hi.
Good evening. My name is Mike Ritchie from Costage Engineering, representing the developers of the project, also here in attendance are the current owners of the property. So the proposed plan is the development of six flex storage buildings on three existing parcels, Lot R7, sorry, R5, R6, and R7. Those buildings range in size from the largest being 14,400 square feet to the smallest of about 5,400 square feet. These are gonna be metal stored buildings, architecturally, you know, gray, something neutral in color, and they're gonna be broken up into roughly 30-foot wide units. The plans show dash lines which are meant to represent individual units. So based on the size of the lot dictated kind of the size of the buildings, Lot R5 was the larger of the three lots. So that had the 14,000-square-foot building that's approximately 60 feet wide. As you go east along the property, there's the middle one which is a little bit tight, and those depth of those buildings shrunk down to about 50 feet. So generally, the units will be about 1,800 to 1,500 square feet in size, and the use is primarily gonna be for storage. You know, the owners or the developers can speak to it if you have questions. But what was expressed to me was, you know, somebody may own a boat, and they wanna store it indoors instead of outdoors over the winter. Somebody may have, you know, a construction business or a landscaper business, and they wanna store some equipment out of the elements. It's not intended for store space or, you know, primarily customer visiting, it's more for storage, drop off, and leaving. So all six buildings will be designed essentially the same layout. They'll have bathrooms and plumbing within, heating, and will meet the current code requirements. So with that being said, we've designed the site to meet all of the applicable codes. We don't anticipate any variance as being required for setbacks, for height, for parking. All the properties will have stormwater management. We submitted a voluminous SWIP, which I apologize for the amount of paper we printed on that one, should've done double-sided. We've prepared a long-form EAF. We've reached out to Argenee. I skipped over it. This property was before this board last year with a different development on it. Wetlands were deleted by a consultant, but at that time they weren't verified by the Army Corps of Engineers. Subsequent to the original nomination, the Army Corps went out, did their field visit, and they determined that there was a small ditch, an existing ditch, that connected what is an existing wetland, believe it much tributary to Four Mile Creek, maybe farther up north, and it connected through this little ditch, this larger wetland. So what was considered by the wetland consultant to be isolated, non-jurisdictional, essentially not a wetland in the eyes of the Army Corps of Engineers, or not one that requires permitting, this one now became regulated and jurisdictional. So because of that, the previous project, the developer really didn't have a path forward with his plan. So the current owners were reached out to buy it, and hostage having history on the property, were able to come up with a design to work around the wetlands. So we are proposing a small disturbance to this wetland ditch, roughly seven hundredths of an acre, under the 10th acre threshold that typically cause more of a rigorous review by the Army Corps of Engineers. We still will need a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers, and we're gonna work with our wetland consultant Scott Livingstone to obtain that permit. I did reach out to Argenee, because just south of Donovan Street is an Argenee-owned property that goes all the way up to Phillips Road. And this project would need two easements actually, for the two separate driveways through the Argenee property in order for this to be viable. Previously, for the last project, we reached out to Argenee, and they were in support of it, and they were gonna submit to Public Service Commission. They are still in support of it, and are planning on reaching out to Public Service Commission once and if a project were approved. But it was stated to me that, understanding how projects need to work and how slow the Public Service Commission could be, that Argenee could issue an interim license to allow the developers to access the property while waiting for the formal easement to be in place, could be 90 days, 120 days down the road. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has. I think this is a good use for the property, and yeah, happy to hear any questions you have.
I have one. Are we limited to the use of these buildings going to be for storage and storage home?
No, I can't... Yes. And again, I think the caveat being if a tenant came in and wanted a use that didn't fall within the code, or a use that required a special use permit, it's our understanding that they'd have to come to the board to obtain a special use permit if they were intending to use their portion, not for storage. Is that correct? That's how I understood it when I met them there.
Would that be for any use of that particular space, or just those things that wouldn't require our approval?
And correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's any use that would require, doesn't fall into the existing code and would require a special use permit, is the way I understood it.
If it requires a change of use for the building code, it's gonna apply to these spaces as well. You could have a landscaper renting it out and running his business out of there, and then if you turn it to something else, you know, that landscaper moved out, so...
Height of the building?
Uh, I believe, I'm sorry, I don't have a plan. Uh, yeah, I believe it is 32 feet, 'cause it's dictated, yeah, 32 feet is the height, and that's the same height for all the buildings, which dictates the setback.
And just help me with that. How is that in reference to the same level as the expressway?
Oh geez. I can't reference the height of 104 in relation to the height of those buildings. I do know there is a pretty dense tree buffer along that south property line, which is proposed to remain. So I don't know the height of those trees, but I would imagine that the majority of them are over the height of the building. So I would think that much of this project would be screened from 104 by the existing vegetation. You know, I, just driving this road every day, I believe that 104 is maybe, you know, 10, 12 feet higher than the grade back at this property. So, you know, part of the roof may be visible this time of year from 104.
Okay, my last question, just the setting here, does that run all the way over to Phillips Road? I couldn't tell on the map that I have.
This property?
Yes.
Yeah, it does.
The green property with the six buildings on it, does it run all the way over to Phillips Road?
It does, yes. It's a flag lot. Actually, this Lot 7 is separate, they're all three separate lots. So this Lot 7, yes, does connect to Phillips Road.
Would it be access off Phillips Road, or would the access remain off Donovan, or otherwise?
We're currently proposing the access only off Donovan. There'd be a shared access agreement between these two lots to enter this lot. If down the road, the property were sold, or a different owner came in, you know, they'd have to make application with this board and also obtain approval from county DOT. The previous project, the developer was hoping to get access to Phillips Road, and we worked with county DOT, and based on the width of the flag lot, when it was set up, it worked for two-way traffic, but now, based on how much room they need, it really is only suitable for one way only. So that's not currently what we're showing, but if one access down the road were to be proposed, it'd have to come back to this board and obviously go back to county DOT.
Is there an access road for Argenee still coming up Phillips Road?
Uh, yeah, the existing access road is actually just to the south of that property.
And that's not gonna be used by this development?
No, not all, yeah, separate properties.
So is that the road that is currently paved?
Yes.
I mean, it's not...
Yeah, that's the Argenee one that just goes back to those, yeah.
And on the other side of the development, where the trail is?
Yes.
Is that directly right across from, at the end of your plans here?
The Ho-Jack Trail?
Yes.
Yeah, the Ho-Jack Trail actually runs parallel to this property, all the way from Phillips, all the way past it, and we're proposing, you know, two crosswalks where that Ho-Jack Trail crosses the drive.
But where the picnic benches, et cetera, are right now, it's right there, right?
Yeah, separate property, actually. There's that trailer, I don't know.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that's actually a separate property, separate from this, on the, actually, the other side of the Argenee property. It's a little triangular piece of property.
So the access road's coming across, that's agreed, that's going across the owner's land, and...
Correct. Yep, there's a portion actually on the western driveway, actually, that's right away the properties, and I don't know how that was done, but where the driveway connects to Donovan Park is actually right away. And then it enters into the Argenee property. So technically, it's not entering through Duck's property for the driveway.
Are these buildings intended to be fully conditioned at all times?
Yes.
Insulated and conditioned?
Yes.
Heating, cooling?
Just heating.
Just heating?
Just heating.
Every individual unit, it appears, gets a sanitary connection and a water connection per unit? Are you putting in the bathrooms?
We're not 100% sure how that's gonna work yet, okay? We may let, let whoever rents it, if they want one, to put it in, if not, we haven't decided that far down yet.
Are all the units individually electric metered and gas metered?
Yes, sir.
So every single unit will have their own separate meter?
Yes.
Some of it will go along with how much space each tenant wants to rent out. If you have one tenant that wants to rent out half of the one bedroom, then they'll, you know, they don't need bathrooms for every unit. And we've already talked about, you know, separately dividing off the spaces, and they already know they're gonna have to pull building permits. So that'll decipher with me when, when and how many bathrooms go in, and walls, and fire code, and there's third one to it, but, yeah.
Are we limited to six buildings on this particular property?
Per code, or?
Well, right now, you've got some, you've got some large spaces between the buildings. Could you put another building in there?
No, not without getting various.
Okay.
Or obviously coming back to this board for approval. But yeah, that's laid out to meet code for parking, so we're pretty much right at where we need to be. You know, I don't see, you know, I don't see fitting a building in the middle there and meeting setbacks.
Hope you understand what this thing looks like when it's all done. As I drive down Ridge Road, I see a new storage building. As we drive up and down Five Mile Line Road, I understand there's gonna be another storage location there. Or, or maybe there isn't, I don't know.
Not anymore, yeah.
They turned it down. All right. How would this look in comparison to the other storage spaces?
Right. It's not gonna look like the live storage right here next to the ice cream place with the brick. This is more gonna be the building that was just put up across from Kittleburgers. I think that's more architecturally how this is gonna look. It's gonna be metal clad, metal roof, you know, not with the ornate, you know, brick of the one on Ridge Road. More traditional storage units. The one on Salt Road, just north of Xerox, that park back there, yeah, it's gonna be metal clad buildings with, you know, generally one overhead door per unit.
So, overhead doors, no storefronts?
No.
No. No man doors?
A man door for each, you guess. There will be man doors.
Each one...
Windows associated with each unit? No.
I mean, generally, you know, the doors aren't, with the exception of one building, aren't opening up towards Donovan, and the one that is opening up towards Donovan is actually to the east of the curb in the road. So you're likely either gonna see the back of the building or the side elevation of the buildings from Donovan.
Has the fire marshal reviewed this plan? 'Cause this site is tight, and it's gonna be real tight with buildings.
Right.
Because it certainly doesn't look like you have the right turning radius and stuff for fire equipment to get in and out.
Yeah, and we ran the turning movements, and obviously, they'd have to do, you know, K-turns to make some of these maneuvers. We didn't get one comment from Aaron that the drive for Lot 5, we extended to the western corner of the building to provide the 150-foot access for fire hoses.
Fire marshal has reviewed these, and there was a few changes that we talked about, being the access roads have to be 30 feet wide, not the 26. The aisleways, we'll call them, have to be 26 feet wide for fire apparatus, so I really wanted to review. They are making those changes for the fire marshal, for the fire code.
So Mike, speaking of turning movements, I guess I just have a look at the dumpster enclosure for R6. I'd be curious on how a dumpster truck is going to maneuver that.
Yeah, we may need to look at relocating that to a different part of the property, maybe, you know, maybe put it more on the western side of it so it can back out and exit instead of having to reverse out through the whole property.
And if this was to proceed, I would request some, you know, pedestrian crossing signs at the both entrances type of thing.
Sure, sure.
I mean, I know it's a metal clad building and all that, it'd be kinda nice to see a rendering of colors and whatever, you know, you're thinking type of thing. That's all I have.
We do the same color.
Yeah. Well, they just said they do the same color, same color scheme as Kittleburgers.
We're gonna do basically the same color scheme as Kittleburgers, so...
That's a gray or something.
Yeah, gray and black.
Dark gray, white gray.
Dark brown or something.
No, it's gray and black. The bottom is black, the bottom three feet is black with the top gray, and I believe the roof is black as well.
Yes.
So you're thinking the same thing, then?
Absolutely.
Having at least a different look of providing those break or something, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Let's be clear, these aren't like the self-storage units, we're not talking about...
No, I'm just...
Do you have any access controls? Or is it just wide open? Are the roads gonna be gated?
No.
No.
Fully open?
Fully open.
We are proposing some lighting throughout the site, just for safety and...
Security.
Yeah, security, so...
I know we haven't had to deal with it a lot this year, but have you guys thought through a snow management plan? Because we're not gonna give a window like this all the way through. So, snow removal and storage is always a big deal. You got room for that?
Yeah, you know, we can, obviously, we remove this dumpster on the north side of that western lot, there's room to push it there, there's room on the south side of that lot to push it out of the way, and then, you know, on the middle lot, you can kinda push, you know, one side or the other. We're not, it's not gonna be curved, it's just gonna be open, so you can push it to either side of the parking area, and similarly, you know, we can look to relocate that dumpster enclosure for that far eastern lot, you could push it to the south, and then, again, we're not proposing a driveway to Phillips, so you can kinda push it all back towards the eastern portion of the project. We get pretty creative with moving the snow around.
Other questions and comments on this?
So there's really no proposed landscaping?
No, we're just lawn, not, you know, against the board, you know, they wanted landscaping near the access drives, but for the most part, you know, this site is fairly well hidden from, you know, most everybody I know. Another comment about the height of the building on Lot 4, I do believe, you know, leaving that existing vegetation, you know, between 104 and our limits of disturbance will provide a pretty good buffer to 104.
So you said the height of the building is what, 37 feet?
32 feet.
32 feet.
And I believe that's to the peak.
To the peak.
104, they'll be 90 feet above.
Yeah.
About this, so you're gonna be...
Right. But again, you know, there's a mix of a lot of pine and deciduous trees that are 20, 40, 50 feet in height, you know, so that they should help buffer the building. I'm not saying it's gonna buffer completely, especially with leaves off, you're gonna see it, but hopefully it won't be, you know, sticking up above 104 to the point where it's obnoxious.
Back to landscaping, just, so you're aware, DEC requires some landscaping in all the bio-attention areas and the stormwater facilities?
Yep, I think we leave, we left it at grass, and we can revise that and add some low shrubs, landscaping shrubs, just to, for...
Yeah, just to meet their standards.
Yep.
Usually I presented with sketch of the buildings and landscaping, lighting, outside lighting.
I apologize, I think the plans that were submitted were lacking the lighting plan, which we do have prepared, and I can submit to Aaron. The site plan shows locations of the full zone. We are proposing a number of pole-mounted lights at the driveways along the main access, and in this larger parking lot, and then the bulk of the lighting after that will be building mounted lighting. And again, primarily for security purposes. It'll be LED, full cutoff, dark sky, applied lighting.
What would be your schedule on this?
I can't speak for all their intentions, but I do know their plan is to build Lot R5, the western lot, now, and then based on demand, build out going east in the future. So Lot R5 being separated by the wetland, you know, stormwater, the access drive, all utilities can be installed completely separately from the other lots.
Are there gonna be any water or discharge permits with the county or the state?
There'll be a speedies permit with the...
There will be a speedies permit?
We have, we're gonna be over an acre, so we'll need a stormwater permit from the state. And we'll submit a NOI and an MS4 form, and get that signed and submitted, and stormwater inspections will be done.
The state will come out and do regular inspections?
Nope, no, either us or another consultant will do it, and we submit it to Aaron and, you know, do the weekly inspections, and then when the work's done, we would close the permit out. Again, we do the inspections during construction.
Thoughts or questions? Additional questions? All right. So then the variance that you're looking for is...
Oh, we're requesting preliminary and final site plan approval from this board, which was submitted on the application form, I believe. We don't require any variances, area variances or use variances for the project, so just site plan approval. So we did apply for preliminary and final approval. We submitted the long-form EAF for the project. So if the board was comfortable with seeker, preliminary, final, that's what we requested today.
Okay. Thank you. I got no other questions. What we'll do is we'll give the public an opportunity to comment, so, or otherwise. Anyone wanna speak from the general public?
Richard Walder, 20 Elm Street. I have just one question is on the usage, I'm afraid I was a little unclear. You mentioned lawn and garden, storage, or would people be working on their equipment in there? If they're storing it there, I can see them trying to work on the equipment. As a past active member of the fire department, there was a, used to be a Quonset hut-type building down on Phillips Road, until the guy lit up a torch to try to work on some of his equipment. Unfortunately, lawn and garden equipment contains gasoline. Being a Quonset hut-type metal building, it was extremely hard for the fire department to gain access to that building because with the intensity of heat and the smoke inside, they basically had to try to cut holes through heavy metal construction to gain access to ventilate the building enough that they could even get in. And so I wonder, is there gonna be these lawn and garden, or people using the building being allowed to do any kind of work in the building?
I can go up and address the board to that question. I guess the short answer is, that's unknown at this point, kinda who the tenants would be. Even though it's been with Aaron, you know, any use that did come in and need to comply with the villagers' code and, you know, I agree with the statement, you know, any user that comes in that works on equipment, there is, you know, a risk for hazard. And I guess with that being said, I think primarily the use is stored. Now, that's not to say that somebody who stores there, you know, lawnmowers there isn't gonna do small maintenance, but again, we're not proposing a mechanic shop or a repair shop... or a repair shop in any of these, these units. So I, I don't know if that necessarily answered the question. I don't know if, if Aaron has any guidance on what would require a special use permit and what wouldn't, and if, you know, some of these, I guess heavier industrial uses would be allowed or not allowed. And I don't know, Dave or Joe, if you have any comment on that?
I think they would have to see Aaron for if they want to do something special on one of the buildings, okay? We're just proposing the main building, okay, the open space, okay? If they want to proceed further and work on something, they'd have to get permit from the village.
Well, the trouble seems to be, would be that they rent the building to store the equipment, unknownst to you or Aaron, on a nice day when they're not mowing or plowing snow, they're in there working on their equipment without your knowledge or his knowledge. I mean.
Well, they're renting that space, so they'd be allowed to work on their equipment in their own space, as long as they're not doing it for hire for somebody else, then that's allowed.
Yeah, well, like I say, there used to be a Quonset hut building, a storage building down near the end of Phillips Road.
But they would still be in, they would still be required to be in compliance with anything on the speedies permit, any discharge permits, but would it prevent them from changing belts on a mower? I don't think so.
Would it prevent them from getting the welder out and trying to straighten the bent parts and fix things?
Good question.
Unfortunately, I can't answer what anybody could do there, but I know.
I mean.
The owners would make sure they, that whoever comes in has to get a special use permit, and Aaron is at least aware of who the user is.
I, I, I could suggest at least something be written in the lease that would supposedly prevent.
Prevent, prevent what though? I'm not following.
Prevent.
From them working on their own equipment in their own leased space?
Using of any hazardous type equipment to work on that equipment, like, and there's a lot of people that can use a cutting torch that don't know how to use a cutting torch.
These are metal lined buildings, it's not wood inside. So it's a non-combustible area that we're given them.
They're high base.
So it's, it's a metal roof, metal inside, and it's all non-combustible. So it's not like wood where spark is going to catch it on fire.
Well, the fire I'm referencing, it was a metal building, and that was the problem. It was too fireproof to get into it.
I guess.
I think probably the one thing that you could do, and, and that may be something that we want to discuss at some point, but the one thing you could do is you could put an open flame permit requirement inside the building. Then what you've said is you haven't said, you can't do it. You've said, we will go through a permitting process, the permitting process will look at what you're doing, what's there for prevention, and it's done.
So each unit's going to be required, once they, once we know what they're doing, they're going to be required for, you know, fire inspections and everything else. So the fire marshal is going to be well aware of what's going on in there as well, as well as I am, so. I mean, I want to sit there and.
You don't want to get down over time?
No.
Understood, but I, I did, well, well put, thank you very much. Other comments or thoughts? Okay. What we have before this board then is a plan to approve as they are written and as it's in front of us. I don't see any. Please do.
Mike, is there any, what's the thought on having the two or the three lots? Is there, can we combine this into one lot?
I think the thought is that not knowing what the owners want to do down the road, if somebody comes and says, hey, I'd like to buy these two buildings, they can sell them. If it's all one lot, then you have to go back through the re-subdivision process and it makes it a little bit more complicated. I understand from a tax perspective, it might be easier if it's one lot now, but I, I think they let the flexibility down the road to, you know, if the offer came to them to sell those lots that they, they could.
So then my one question or concern would be with Lot R five and Lot R six, you get the stormwater facility that's going over the property line?
Right.
I would see about trying to.
An easement.
Well, either an easement.
Or a maintenance agreement.
Or if you can modify the stormwater facility so it's all on one lot?
Yeah, you know, the, the intent, and yes, we can, we can do that. You know, we may have to have easement for the discharge pipe to run through that lot. Because we, yeah, there's no reason that, so these two stormwater ponds, as they're designed now, function as one pond, they're interconnected with a pipe.
Yep.
To allow to maximize the storage. Mike, to your point, if they are separate lots and you have neighbors that don't agree, you know, we could pull that back, this stormwater pond completely separate and then just grant an easement to have this stormwater discharge line discharged to the ditch. So we, we can revise that.
Yeah, I mean, generally, the person that, you know, buys one lot that doesn't like the other, won't know that there's a pipe necessary under the ground maybe, and I'm not worried about the equalization pipe, but it's just a, hey, you're not maintaining that part of the pond and.
Understood. Yeah, I don't want to cause issue to the neighbor, unknownst to them. So yeah, that's not an issue, I can change that.
If separate lots, they should be separate lots, not interdependent?
Well. All right, that's the only question I have.
All right, well, thank you. All right, so we've had our public comments or public discussions, I, I think, just so the record's clear, it is subject to a public hearing, okay? So I think you should open it, you're a little kind of informal here, you should open it for a public hearing and ask if any members of the public wish to speak, and then close the public hearing. As put, we are in a public session right now. Are there any other comments from the public, either for or against this? They can bring up the comment that would be in their mind. Otherwise, what we will do is we will give time for that, then we will close that, and then the board will try and make its decision. Comments or thoughts?
No further comments.
We've had yours, thank you very much. Any other ones? Okay. Just let the meeting minutes know that we did open it up to the public. We did give one comment. We, we opened it up for any additional comments, we didn't get any. We've closed that session. Now what we've got then is this item in front of the board for a vote, either for or against it. Well, they're, they're, they're asking for two different approvals, preliminary site plan approval and final site plan approval. Now, you don't have to give both all in the same meeting. In fact, it's unusual for both to be given off in the same meeting. And I'm just a suggestion, you know, we've heard that the roadways as submitted on these plans are going to be wider thirty feet instead of twenty-six feet, and we've heard that a pond is, that one pond should be solely on, on Lot R five. My recommendation is, is that, that you, they come back after you get a plan that corresponds to what in fact they're going to do before you approve it. So you can give preliminary approval with those conditions, but I would suggest not give final approval till you see what the actual final site plan is going to be. Also, there was a suggestion that perhaps a sketch of the buildings might be supplied, which I don't think is unreasonable, so you can actually see, you know, I have some type of rendering as to what's fitted built or proposed to be built. And before you can give any kind of approval, there is seeker that you have to deal with. And, and arguably, this is a type one action because it is contiguous to a publicly owned or operated recreation area, the Ho-Jack Trail. So you need to, they submitted the long form rather than the short form, which is good, but, but you need to go through that in detail and especially with respect to the Ho-Jack Trail, make sure there's not going to be any adverse environmental impact. So that would be step one, before you give even preliminary approval, is you had to take care of secrets. Okay, who's had a chance to take a look at the seeker review? Who's got questions or comments associated with it or believe that it's complete or not complete or want to make connection associated with it? Are, are there, are there additional permits that have to be received from the county, the state, the town, anyone other than the village?
Oh, we will need Munder County Water Authority approval for service connection and for backflow, and Department of Patrol approval for backflow as well. I don't believe any other county or state permits, aside from the speedies permit, are required, and obviously we'll need building permits from the village, but I don't believe any other permits are required. We'll, we'll need an easement from R G N E and their approval from the Public Service Commission, but I believe generally we're requesting water and sanitary services and backflow prevention are the bulk of the other approvals that would be required.
Any D O T impacts with site lines? Could be new entrances coming off the road into the property and out of the property or?
You know, I don't believe so. I mean, we are coming in perpendicular to Donovan. Donovan is a fairly low volume road, and additionally, the proposed use is very low volume. You're going to be thirty-foot wide access drives and, you know, on the western lot, you know, I don't, I've driven down here dozens of times, I don't see any sight line issues for either driveway. It's, I think, clearly wide open to the west, and then again, you have that curve that goes north, and then I believe you have a fairly decent sight line to the curve and very well to the middle lot. And again, I think that would, any traffic on Donovan is going slower around there. I guess, short answer to my long answer is no, I don't anticipate any sight distance issues. I did have Jake Swain, whoever, D P W, at Seward, he did review all his findings and he sat with. Yeah. Jake did suggest, and I'll bring up, there's one comment he did add for me. He provided some old record drawings. He said before 104 was built, potentially there's a, they don't have any record of it besides an old record map, there may be a sanitary manhole somewhere on this southern portion of this property, and we're going to send our survey out to see if we can find that, potentially tying there instead of having to make a curb cut down to connect to the sanitary. That's the only comment he had for me.
I didn't see anything on the plans, Bob. Any plans for monument signs on the road or signage or the property?
No, no monument signs, no directional signs or anything like that.
No building signage?
Nope, no building signage.
A little quick to clarify, you were talking about the crosswalk signage?
Mm-hmm.
Are you wanting freestanding or just?
Okay, whatever, M U C D. Yeah.
Other thoughts or comments?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I am, they're, they're talking real quick. Seems as how they're not doing final today, we're also going to be waiting to hear back from the county, Shreve County, comments or anything that's always submitted, so. Standard practice from county planning, so.
Mike, you got something we should all be?
Well, no, I just want to make sure we're all on the right page and doing the, I don't want to cause any confusion for them and I don't want to cause any confusion to you, so I just.
Well, because it's a type one action, seeker requires a coordinated review. Part of that is determining if there are any other involved agencies, potentially I guess it's Monroe County Department of Health and the D E C. So this board would, could have itself be the lead agency, but then you got to put the other county and the D E C on notice, and they got thirty days to respond back. You probably won't hear anything back from them, but you still got to go, you still got to go through the, the process of undertaking a coordinated review before you can give a preliminary site plan approval.
Well, but you said you submitted to the county.
That's under general municipal law, two thirty-nine M. You know, every, every site plan, whenever there's site plan approval is required, you got to submit it to the county planning, but that's on separate from seeker. And technically, you're supposed to, the county's got thirty days from when they receive the referral to make their comments, and this board should not grant an approval during those thirty days till you wait to hear from them. So do we grant a preliminary approval or no then? Because of the seeker requirements, I don't think you can. You got to go, and it's only because if this weren't a type one and it's because of the Ho-Jack Trail, you know, you wouldn't have to go through the coordinated review process, but, but we have to because of the recreational area that this is contiguous to. So then our action is to submit the plan for approval? Well, the first action would be to take a, take a motion to appoint yourselves, the zoning board, as the lead agency. And then after that, then Aaron and or Jake will put together the letter that will go out to the county and the state to start that coordinated review process.
Okay, I'll make that motion if we're ready for that.
I'm ready for it.
All right, so I hereby make a motion for the villagers to, or to act as lead agency for seeker action. All right, so I hereby make a motion for the village to act as lead agency for Seeker action for, as a type one project for this project.
And that the village make those notifications to the county and to the state?
As lead agency, that's our, that's our requirement.
So we have that motion on the floor, we have it seconded, all in favor as it is?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, you got it to go forward there as we, as we put it down.
So, Aaron, will your office submit to the involved or interested agencies or do you want us to? And if you're going to, do you want us to provide you with additional copies of the application material? And has there been a determination on who those involved interested agencies would be?
Yeah, I mean, looking at.
Well, we're looking at your, your FDA.
Right, yep.
And you identify Monroe County Department of Health, the New York State DEC, and the Army Corps of Engineers. They're federal agencies.
Yeah.
So, that's what we're going on.
Those are the agencies?
That's what we're going on.
Okay, and Aaron, do you want our office to submit those and provide you?
Do you have anything from them already or no? Any of the letters or anything?
Not regarding Seeker, no, no, and we haven't submitted to the Health Department yet for backflow. And again, we have, we're in the process of getting the Army Corps permit, but again, not related to Seeker, so.
Aaron, based on, based on the responses that we get from those agencies?
Yeah.
We will then take it back here for final approval.
And it's 30 days, they have up to 30 days, but if we can get the responses before that?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I don't, I'm assuming your next scheduled meeting we wouldn't make because by the time you submit 30 days, we'd be.
After the next meeting, they'd be considering table application. Yeah. So then they could, they're providing new information and the.
So would there be a special meeting or, I don't know when the March scheduled meeting is, but I'm assuming it's going to be.
March 16th.
Okay, so it's less than 30 days from now, so if we submitted tomorrow, we wouldn't be able to make the April meeting. Is there a way to have the village board have a special meeting after the 30 days? Or if I can get responses from these agencies?
If we can get responses from these agencies quick enough and before the deadline for the next zoning board meeting, then we wouldn't need to do a special meeting, we could have it in the regular scheduled one, I believe. So, we can kind of play the waiting game to be honest with you.
Okay, well, we'll get those.
Because if we can get that done, I mean, not to say if we can get these done within the next day or two. It's not like it's something spectacular that it's going to take two weeks to write up, you know?
Right, it's just needing somebody to.
Generally, generally, it's the village that submits.
And I can provide you with those extra copies of the application.
Yeah, they'll just need extra copies of the plans.
Yeah, I've got some plans still.
Technically, I think they're supposed to have all the application materials from SWIFT and everything that we.
You're going to make a copy of this?
I'll, I'll shrink it down.
Wait, should they not modify the plans?
No, I think they should.
Yeah, I think.
Modify the plans first, then submit the revised package, right?
No, well, they don't need that for the coordinated review.
No, yeah, they don't need that.
Because if they want to be on the March 16th.
But we need to provide you with the revised plan.
It would be beneficial for them to take in their comments today and then bring that.
Oh, okay.
Yep, we can do that, we will do that. So Aaron, I'll get you the three extra copies, everything, the chart of type one.
I'm sure it's a type. I just put Jake and I.
Yes, yes, yeah. Not to speak for the board, and of course, you have to take into consideration everything that's submitted. Question that was asked me by my client, if we were to meet the Seeker requirements and provide revised plans that addresses all the comments that were presented today, would there be any objection to the board granting Seeker preliminary and final at the next meeting? Again, it might be a loaded question, but.
I don't think you can ask them in advance how they're going to go.
Are there any other issues that we should be aware of?
Certainly, you can ask for preliminary and final approval, just like we did now. And if, if all your i's are dotted and t's are crossed and you've submitted what they've asked you to submit.
They could.
Then you're, you know, you can stand a, probably stand a good chance, but you know.
Understood, yeah, we can't answer that question now. Just wanted to make sure that anything else that was done on the board's mind that needed to be addressed would be addressed and.
I think the big thing is probably the rendering of the building. I mean, obviously, I think we all sort of like the Kittleberger Building, so we're not opposed to it, but.
Need something you can actually see instead of imagine.
Right.
Like the one that was proposed a year ago.
Yep.
Yeah, so what I, you know, I did, you were going to put the one pond solely on.
Correct, yeah.
Solely on the one side. That way you can avoid combining the three parcels. And you're already going to revise the road widths.
Yep, and there's the fire lane access and some comments that were brought up about signage for pedestrians.
The rendering of the buildings and.
Landscaping of buyer retention. Yeah, I took down a bunch of comments.
And then the pedestrian signs, kind of like they have on 250 and Hope Road where the Ho-Jak crosses those. Same, same kind of neon green and yellow signs.
Yep, absolutely, yep.
Again, all this is only because of the Ho-Jak Trail going through that.
Sure, yeah, there's no, I don't think any other type one triggers.
Right, right, no, no, there's no surprise for that, yeah.
Okay, well, I appreciate your time.
I think what should, what should also be done is a motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table until new application or additional.
Is that next meeting?
Yeah. March 16th.
Is that next meeting, March 16th, if it's available? All right, we've got a motion on the table.
I'm checking.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, you've got it. Thank you guys very much. James Owen?
Yes.
Come on up and tell us what's on your mind. And I appreciate you waiting through that.
Are you nervous?
A little bit, a little bit.
Go ahead.
Good evening. Hi, so my name is Leo, I'm a realtor, I represent my tenant, my client right here. James Owen is the architect, but he's unavailable today, so I'm subbing in. I do the best I can. So, the first thing that we're seeking is a preliminary and final subdivision plan approval for the, for the former McDonald Building. We wanted to convert it into a nail salon spa. And the second is the variance will relieve of 31 parking spots. Currently, there's 53 existing, but the code is requiring 84. We want to be able to relieve the 31 that's, you know, that extra that the code is requiring us, so.
Okay, let me ask you real quickly, I know the building that you're going into, I know what you're changing it off to.
Yes.
It doesn't look like you're expanding the building in size, you're going to deal with the existing structure.
Yes, that's correct.
So, the, the question before us is the change in parking, it's not the change in use of that building. Is that correct? That's how I say it. Okay, so you're looking for a variance in the parking and you said 84, I believe?
It was, yes, 84 required, but we have 50, we have 53 right now.
Okay, and just for you, and I don't think it matters, I come to them, I could have come to them wrong, but I came up with 52. I didn't come up with 53, okay? And oh, by the way, 17 and 18 is 35 and another eight on that is another seven is going to be 52.
52, okay.
Doesn't matter, what you're, what you're looking for is, tell me, you're looking for using the existing spaces that are there right now.
Yes, that's correct.
Are you going to do any changes outside the building?
There will be some facelift on the building, yes.
Okay, if it's not in your plans, what do you, you.
We're, okay, so we just, the power washing on the existing exterior, that's, that's about it, that's, that's all we're doing.
With the flat graffiti, I noticed.
Yes, so we're cleaning it up.
Okay.
And what you're going to do there is primarily just nails and pedicures and that type thing?
Yes, that's correct.
Waxing, okay, and waxing, got it. Aaron, anything other than just parking places then?
Nope, I'm going to be talking to Henderson, somebody's on a light pole that were removed, so they're going to have to replace, you know, they're going to have to put out some light poles for lighting and stuff, but that's all, nothing to the site plan.
Have you purchased the property or are you renting?
We're renting.
Yeah, it's still, still the same order, it's physically changed abuse, but also because of it being under personal services is where it kicks in with the amount of parking spots that's needed. When we looked at that, we were surprised at how many parking spots are code. That's another one of those codes that were written, probably.
Did you count 53 or did I count it wrong or?
I think you might have counted it wrong, but that's okay.
You might go through and add those numbers that are in there again. So. I, I got glasses.
Yeah. But yeah, it's, it's, so it's just.
Yep.
So, how many people will be working here at one time?
So, we're going to have. 12.
12?
Yes.
And then what are the hours of operation?
Number of hours, nine hours.
Okay.
Nine hours.
So like.
One hour a day.
I believe it was seven. 9:30 to 7 o'clock.
And is there an estimation as to how long it'll take to do the renovations?
Three to four months.
So opening would be when? Maybe?
I want to say June, June, July.
And then we'll be pulling permits for, you know, interior remodel and that's already been discussed with them. Because it's going to be obviously an extensive interior remodel. And they've already done the roof, not, not, but the Henderson, the owners of the building have already done roofing, so they've already done some upgrades to it.
Any special permits with folks like the county? And what I'm thinking is acetone, denatured alcohol and some of the other things that might be used or will be used. How are you going to deal with that, whether that's on a?
Jake also reviewed these and, or Jake, because he does the sewer and all that, you know, what's going down. There's also plans that, special plans that salons, sorry, what am I trying to thought, salons require. So everything's going to be built per code, so.
So is that include ventilation and stuff like that?
Yep.
And you're going to look at that as periodically?
Yep.
Got it.
It's part of the, part of the odd, then once they're open, then stuff will also fall into the fire marshal to, you know, see what's in there as well when you get those fire inspections.
So do they have to do any special, I know we talked about venting, but like food service, you know, how they have specifics because of served restaurants?
Yeah, like restaurants have grease traps, not, I mean, not that I'm fully aware of, no. And we did look at all the special, like you said, other than what's spelled out in the plans that they've, you know, nothing.
I was just thinking of odors that would be coming from the building, that's all.
Yeah. We just like, you know, there's several salons, stuff that are already around, it's the same rate they have.
And I don't know whether you discharge or not to the sewer, but you'd have to do it within compliance of the Monroe County.
Yes, of course, yes.
So your client has one other one of these?
Yes. He has one half.
Similar?
Yes.
Anyway, you said like 12 employees?
Yes.
Fully, maybe a manager? You got 34 retail spots, so to speak, pedicures and waxing, manicures, that's 34. So even if this building was fully occupied, that's 46 people. And if everybody drives themselves, that's 46 cars, you still got 53 spots.
Plus employees.
Right, 52.
I think they're going to drive through and stick their.
Yes, I got the employees, I got fully occupied chairs, if every, if every chair or seat is occupied and you got two waxers.
And whether you got 53 or 52 spots, 53.
Plus, there's no way you're going to have that much overtime.
I counted 52.
You got plenty of parking.
I used a slide rule.
I can't see three spots for. I'm good.
Well, that's, that's what exists on the books right now. Like we're booking or what we're being asked to provide is a variance for it, okay? So there's more seats than workers? I mean, I've never been in a wage trade before, so.
We have no clue.
I just, I do my own. So, is it, you're doing one job or one part of the procedure and then the person's sitting there and then they're working on somebody else at another time?
Yes, that's right.
Is that how it works?
Yes.
Yeah, sometimes you have to let the general.
Several lines, exactly, yeah.
I'm kidding.
The tables are for the.
Okay, that's nice, thank you. I got to clear it up. I'm up with it. Okay, the only thing I would ask is that if it's approved, we probably ought to have them signing off on this because they haven't signed off yet.
Public?
Aren't we public?
Comments?
Okay, let me give any. That was nicely put to me, to know who it really was.
He's, he's here, so somebody's here.
We mentioned an opening, we're in Waldorf 20 Allen Street. We mentioned an opening about the first of July. Are you aware of what your neighbors do on the second week of July?
I, I, I do not.
The law, the law of that building used to have to have several people in their parking lot to keep those spaces open for their company, their own customers because the second week of July, you can't get near your business because of the carnival.
Thank you, I will note that.
There's a parade on Thursday night and Friday night, Saturday, even Wednesday night, there'll be thousands of people down riding the rides and eating and all that. It is a very big event. There'll be thousands of people down riding the rides and eating and all that. It is very big event.
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone in the public or the general public? Okay, make notation that we've, we've done that. And with that, if you have any other comments you can make, otherwise, thank you.
I do not. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, whether, Aaron, whether it's 52 or 53, I don't think it really matters.
No.
So what we need then is a motion on the table if we are applying, well, first of all, do we have any secret issues associated with this?
This is the...
Type 2.
This is it. They checked the box, buried.
Ah, cool.
But, but here again, Mr. Chairman, in the favorite state law, the basic environmental quality review act.
Secret.
You gotta do secret before you can...
I already put it out there in front of them. I mentioned it a minute ago.
So, and this one, thankful, is a type 2 action because it is the replacement, rehabilitation, or reconstruction of a structure or facility in kind on the same site, including upgrading buildings to meet building energy or fire goals. It's not the one for a variance because the, the, the general one, you can grant, granting of an area variance is type 2, but only for single family, two-family, or three-family residences. So it doesn't fit on the example. But I think it does fit under, it's the same, they're just redoing the inside, you know, the same structure. So it's a, it's a type 2.
Just so everybody's aware, my packet is signed, yours is not, so I just...
Son, you should not have just gotten it.
I don't know what you're talking about.
So anyhow, so what we've got then? Can I make a motion then?
Yes.
Well, we, we gotta go through the secret.
Yeah.
Or the, a motion for a secret.
So I make a motion for a type 2 action under secret with no significant environmental impact.
Okay, we have that motion on the table. Seconded?
I'll second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Good deal, all right. Now we've got a variance for the parking requirement for the location.
So, and if you wanted just quickly again, it's, it's akin to an area bearing. It's under the, those five factors in 175, 76D. Is there gonna be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood?
No, it's gonna be exactly the same.
Yeah.
If anything, it'll be better since they've already been emptied or something.
Right.
And then the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method other than an area variance. Well, there's no room to get any more parking spaces on that parcel. The requested variant, area variance is substantial. Maybe, but that's...
It's not really substantial. It's no different than what it are, it exists as.
Well, no.
Maybe we need to look at it.
Probably if you looked, I don't know what it is for a restaurant, but if 53 spots meet the code for... It probably was sufficient for the other use of restaurant. But it's the quirkiness of this code where three persons per chair, which doesn't make any sense, because...
The worker isn't...
So, so it might be, it might be substantial, but it's not the applicant's fault.
Substantial.
And, and so that hits to whether it was self-created or not.
No.
No. It's not.
Yeah.
So what we're looking for then?
Right. I will make a motion to grant a variance for... What do you wanna call it?
Equal to the number of existing parking places that are either there.
What's it, 26 spots? And then we're, a motion to accept a variance for this facility to have 26 less spots than required for the code.
Okay, we've got that on the table to exist, to accept it as it is.
I'll second it.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Good luck, guys. Much good luck.
Yes.
Also, even though it wasn't checked under applicant type, but it was, it was advertised as... Approval of preliminary and site plan approval. Under, under the code, the new section, any change of use also requires site plan approval from this board. Both preliminary and final.
This is the site plan.
Hmm.
So we have to make a motion to the site?
Yeah.
The site plan has final. All right, we have a motion for that. Okay, so I have to make a, I have to make a motion here for a positive recommendation to accept the preliminary site plan and the final site plan.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve it as it is?
I'll second that.
We have a motion to approve, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None. Good luck to you and I apologize.
Thank you so much, Josh.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
Good luck with your...
Reach out to me tomorrow.
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so before we move and before we go anyplace, Aaron or Joe, who's gonna take the, and make sure that the information is sent to the DUC, to this, to...
County or...
And whoever else it is to be sent to.
Take care of all that.
All right, so you're gonna see that it's taken care of as it is, all right? Now, that, does that mean, today being the 21st, when do we typically know that the county will or will not give us a hands up or a hands down on that?
If it gets close to the date for the cutoff, I can reach out to them and then they'll, they'll be able to tell me. But normally, if it's a local matter, they normally send it back pretty quick.
And... So that means you're gonna call them?
The letter that I...
And that's gonna be for our 16th meeting?
Yeah, I don't really know.
Okay, because what that means is that we need advance notice if we're gonna change this by a week or some other time.
Right.
And there's nothing else on our agenda for next month at the current time?
There's inquiries, but not at the right now. It's a paper whether 20th, August, if they don't, then no.
All right. So then we have a meeting then on the 16th. What do we need to do ahead of time before the next one so we don't have a similar situation where we go through a whole lot of different things?
Hopefully they'll provide.
What do you mean?
They'll revise their plans, right?
Yeah, all their plans will be revised. They were already, you know, they're already notified about what needs to be changed, so they just haven't physically done that.
They're gonna provide that to you, you're gonna provide that to us in advance?
Yeah, no, don't give me all the copies and I'll, I'll submit them to you guys. Thank you so much.
Okay.
How does, I know I spoke with a few of you, does it seem like Tuesday nights work pretty good for everybody?
Well, and that's, that's gonna be permanent. What that means is that we're gonna change that.
I'm just getting a feel for how, how, how do you all feel about Tuesdays?
We...
Why don't we, why don't we come to... That means it's gonna be changed from Thursday nights. It'll no longer be on Thursday. What it will be is on Tuesday.
I have a strong feeling that's it, that's okay? I'm just, just inquiring about it.
Is it gonna be the 3rd?
Any day but Friday.
We do it on Saturday morning.
So is it, is it gonna be, 'cause we were, we were gonna meet last week, right? Not, yeah, the 16th?
It'd be the...
Is it the same week? Or is it, are we now moving it?
Is it the 3rd?
Tuesday.
Or the 4th, or what do we want?
It would end up being the 3rd Tuesday.
3rd Tuesday.
3rd Tuesday, okay.
All right, so this isn't gonna change again, though, I mean...
Well, we're not saying we're changing right now. We're just, I'm just inquiring, is it anybody...
Oh, we got four people, we got five people.
Well, I think technically...
We have to go to the village board.
The village board in its organization, we've set and, and took a resolution that the zoning board meets on the 3rd.
Right, and what we were doing, we could take that back to them and ask them for a change.
Correct.
So that's why I was just inquiring, does that have to regular business organization, if that were to happen, would it happen? Not nothing right now.
I oppose neither day.
Okay.
Okay, so you're okay with Tuesday's point, what about you?
I, I think generally I'd be fine with it.
3rd Tuesday?
Yes, I'm fine.
Okay.
I'll only inquiry.
Okay, I will, I will see what Daryl says about that.
So if it's not the 16th, it's the 21st.
Well, no, this isn't taking effect.
Won't, won't affect March.
No, no, won't affect the rest of our, our, our business year.
Okay.
The next organizational meeting for the village board is actually in July.
Yeah.
So it won't likely change until then unless there's a situation like this.
Joe, right.
That's their organizational meeting, yeah.
Hey, Joe, just so you know, my wife texted me saying there was no sound on the video. Sorry.
Okay.
Thought I'd let you know.
It's a little late to change it now, but thanks.
Okay, so our meeting then in March stays on the 16th.
Correct.
Unless we did a change.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, they're gonna stay on Thursdays. The earliest it could, should change wouldn't be till July.
Unless there was a sploshy circumstance that came up with this.
That would be...
You could, yes, be, the villages, the villages' calendar year is July 1 to June 30. Because all villages are like that, they must stay the year. Don't ask me why, they are. Same with cities are the same, July 1 to June 30. Towns are calendared, January 1 to December 30. But the village show, so for example, if you go to the village website, it lists all the meetings of this board, and it's got dates, you know, so you... You know, and sometimes people rely on those in advance to figure out when they're gonna be submitting them. So you really shouldn't just change them in midstream.
Okay.
Okay.
But, you know, if you guys are okay with Tuesday, I'm guessing the village board isn't gonna have a condition. I guess the only difference is, you know, use of this building on, this room on Tuesdays instead of Thursdays, which is the normal, you know, board meetings and stuff, but...
There are generally conflicts, really most nights.
All right, just so that we finalize this before we leave here tonight, are we gonna move forward and ask to have a change starting in April, or do we wanna wait until July? And I, I don't care, I just don't wanna correct this a second time.
No, no, I, I would say hold off till the organization will, you know, change it. If it's gonna be changed, change it then. So that's all stuff I'll bring up to the village board. I said, I was just inquiring, is it, if it was doable or not doable?
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to end the meeting?
Okay, we've got a motion on the table.
Hold on, second half.
Seconded. Good luck, thank you.
Aye.
Aye.